Good afternoon and welcome. This is the regular meeting of the Planning Commission, September 21st, 2016. May I have roll call, please?
Planning Commissioners Astorian.
Here.
Landrigan.
Here.
Lee Manukian.
Here.
And Shabazian.
I'm here.
Mr. Astorian, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
We'll be happy to. Please follow me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So, the agenda for this meeting was posted on Wednesday, September 14th, is that correct?
Yes, so the agenda for this meeting was posted on Wednesday, September 14th, 2016, on the bulletin board outside City Hall and on the city's website.
Thank you. May I have approval of the minutes from August 17?
So.
All right, second. Minutes are approved. Let me see if I have any oral communication here. I see none. Is there any oral communication? Seeing none. I will go straight to the zoning appeals and new business. We have none. I do have a request from our second agenda item here of the new business, Planning Commission items, subdivision of land tentative tract number 63273, time extension request, case number PTTMCP 1619280, to be heard ahead of our old business. And I will change the agenda for that reason. And so, may I have a staff report on that? Is that correct?
Yes.
Our lawyers, am I doing this correctly? Thank you.
It's not coming any closer, that's okay.
Yes, Madam Chair and Planning Commissioners, this item is a request for time extension for the tentative map for the Glendale Adventist Medical Center. The tentative map was approved in 2006, and it was to rearrange the existing lots within the medical, the 25-some acre medical center. And that, the request was to re-subdivide the camp, the medical campus, from 14 parcels into eight lots. The proposal was not to, for new development, but to accommodate the development that had occurred on the campus over the years and development that was approved in 2003 for new buildings at the time, and rearranging the circulation, the vehicular circulation of the campus. The applicant has been working on the tentative map. It's about to expire. The applicant is requesting some additional time in order to complete the map. And this is a public hearing before the Planning Commission and requires Planning Commission approval. I'd like to conclude my presentation unless there are questions from the Commissioners. The applicant is also in the audience in case there are questions of the applicant.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions on this?
Extension is for one year, correct?
That's the request, yes.
I don't have any other questions. If you'd like, I'll move the item.
I'll close the public hearing. Please move the item.
So move.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Shall I have a roll call, please?
Planning Commissioners Astorian.
Yes.
Manukian.
Aye.
Shabazian. Chairperson Protem, Landrigan.
Aye, thank you. Thank you for that. And we will continue back to our Planning Commission items, our old business, which is item number one, appeal of deputy director's decision for noise code violation, case number N noise 1305975. May I have a staff report, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. This matter involves a request to reverse an exemption granted to the applicant from the noise ordinance regarding three air conditioner condensing units located at 1348 Imperial Drive, single-family residence. The appellant resides at the neighboring property located at 1341 Torres Drive, a single-family residence. Both properties are located in the R1R residential zone. At the June 15th, 2016 Planning Commission meeting, the Commission directed staff to bring the two parties together to see if they could come to an amicable resolution and explore additional methods of reducing noise levels associated with the three air conditioning condensing units. Since then, staff was able to bring the two parties together on two occasions, August 3rd, 2016, and on August 29th, 2016. Attached in the staff report are additional exhibits. I believe both the applicant and the appellant are here, and staff is available to answer any questions.
Thank you. I would like the minutes to record that Chairperson Lee is here, and I will turn over the meeting to him.
Okay, any questions for the staff? If not, then I will open the hearing for public hearing. They might...
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question? I'd like a question, since this was continued for certain material, what is the confines of this meeting? Anything that was previously won stands. The new material that we requested should be presented, and it should be limited to that. I'm asking for a legal opinion. Am I correct?
Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, Commissioner Landrigan, this is a de novo hearing, and so you can consider, you don't, do not have to limit the material that was just received. You can consider all the material before you for purposes of making this, making this decision. Or you can request that we or the applicants provide additional information if you feel it's necessary in order to render, render your decision.
Thank you, Ms. Van...
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. So with that, yes.
Mr. Chair, this is the time that we ask questions from the staff, right?
Yes.
So from the get-go, let me ask, and I don't know who's going to respond to the questions that I have, a couple of them. Can somebody tell me if a sound curtain on posts violates our zoning ordinance? I'm referring to an email that was exchanged between the appellant and the applicant on 9/15, that somebody claimed that sound curtains that are installed on posts may violate the zoning code.
Well, the zoning code does allow for screening of mechanical equipment that's within the setback area. I mean, we generally would review that to determine if, you know, look at it for design review and that sort of thing. We wouldn't really allow to extend, you know, over a certain, there's no real set standard for it, but I guess if you could kind of consider that the size of, the height of it, or whatever, is inappropriate for the use that it's trying to provide, I guess we would look at it that way. But generally, there's no real set standards for the size or height or anything else for the screening, but it's got to be kind of really, you know, with the use, and that's a four-foot-high or 10-foot-high thing when you don't need something that tall, I guess we would look at it that way.
And so, the other question that I have is, there was an exchange about techniques used in reducing sound. And my question from the staff is, does a technique mean, or could it include relocation of equipment?
I wouldn't really consider that a technique. That's kind of, I mean, technique for us would be any kind of attenuation equipment, whether it be, you know, lattice, screening, trees, what have you, or a short wall, that sort of thing, would be kind of something that we would look at that way. Relocation wouldn't really qualify for that, in my opinion.
We are going to keep the hearing open, so just in case if I have to go back to the staff later on, right?
That's correct.
Thank you.
So, any other questions for the staff? If not, then we'll ask the speakers to come up. Mr. Andre Conthal?
Excuse me?
Did I pronounce that right?
Very close, crontal.
Conthal, okay.
Thank you very much, members of the Commission. I'd like to, I know you've been provided with, with an update and a summary of what's occurred, so I'll just try to briefly touch on some nuances that weren't covered in what you've seen. Since the Commission suggested that we get together to try and resolve this, we retained an acoustics consultant, Acoustics Group, Inc., specifically Robert Wu there. And he initially suggested a contractor by the name of Kinetics to construct some enclosure to have the units enclosed and reduce the sound. I called Kinetics and had Kinetics come down, and when they saw the lay of the land of the house, the house is on a pretty steep hill, and so the units are on different levels, and they don't have a lot of room to put enclosures around. Kinetics suggested that in lieu of separate containers to be put over each unit, there be a sound control curtain. So that's how the sound control curtain came about. Mr. Wu has concluded that a sound control curtain, as recommended by Kinetics, would reduce by approximately five decibels the sound coming from the units there. So that's, that's one thing. Mr. Wu's other suggestion, other than some sort of enclosure or barrier, was a properly rated dual pane window be installed in the neighbor's, the appellant's residence. That with an STC rating in the 45 to 50 range, which he believed would significantly reduce sound. During the meetings that we've had, we requested from the appellant's information about what the sound rating on their windows are, and we didn't get any information along those lines. But they did submit a letter from a window owner, a window company owner or principal, that said that usual windows have around a 30 STC rating on the average. So what we're suggesting is, is a very high-rated window, and one that we would be willing to have installed at our expense, which is estimated to be about $500. The sound curtain and the structure upon which it would be placed is estimated to cost around $5,000. And we are willing and ready, with the city's approval, to, to do that. If that plan is approved, one additional benefit is that Kinetics could go out then and do an actual estimate of what the sound reduction would be, based on sound tests that we understand the city intends to conduct at the residence. So, that's what's been proposed, as I understand that those proposals have been rejected by the appellant's. They have proposed instead that we relocate the units. And relocation of the units, for the reasons that were brought up during the discussion by Commissioner Astorian, in our view don't constitute a sound baffling, muffling, you know, barrier within the meaning of the code. Also, we just submitted today, because this issue kept recurring, a letter from our real estate broker, who lives right around the corner and is very familiar with the area and our home in particular. And we have such a small backyard, and we have pictures here, which have been submitted to the city, and I can show if the Commission wants to see them, pictures of how tiny the backyard is. It's probably about as large as the area that you're sitting behind here, this barrier, or perhaps from this podium to the wall. That's the size of it. And the real estate broker's letter has stated that if we were to put units back there, three condenser units back there, that already small space would be such that prospective buyers very likely would not be interested in the house, or it would have to be sold for a much reduced value. The cost of relocation has been previously submitted. It's, it's in our expert architect's report, and that amount is $15,600, and that is itemized. So, but we don't think relocation is really a feasible option. Fortunately, a new development, and one which I think should put the Commission at, at greater ease concerning this matter, is that within the 257-page submission by the appellant's, they included a recent sound test by their own expert, who I believe is sitting right here. That sound test report is dated from June 8 of this year. Apparently, without, you know, any notification or formal process, they decided to see and test what the sound was of our units in actual operation during the day and the evening. They also measured the ambient noise away from where the units were operating. And those, those measurements are startling, because they show that the ambient sound at the residence of the appellant's, away from where the units are operating, is in the 40 to 50 decibel range, usually. They cherry picked one reading that was below 40, to say it's as low as 37, but that was one reading out of dozens and dozens and dozens of readings. Most of them were in the 40 to 50 decibel range. That's the ambient. So what was the sound they measured when the units are in operation next to the units? Only two measurements during the whole time they were measured, over the course of several days, exceeded 60 decibels. And those must have been anomalies, because just before and just after those 15-minute measurements, the decibel readings were in the 40s. The other readings are mostly in the 40s and 50s. There are only two readings out of all of the measurements taken by the appellant's expert that are in excess of 60. That's significant, because again, their submission includes a letter from a gentleman by the name of Stewart, who talks about how quiet air conditioning units are, or how noisy they are. And he concluded, and this is at page 53 of their submission, Stewart Acoustical says that high-efficiency condensers are in the 73 to 78 decibel range. He also says in the letter that the appellant submitted, some new high-efficiency models are about 70, or a DBA. So, we're doing pretty well in terms of the sound emitted from the units actually in operation at the residence. The, to put this in perspective, the National Institute of Health says that 60 DBA, just to put it in perspective, is the sound emitted through normal conversation. 40 is about the sound of a refrigerator hum. So what we have in the nighttime is a sound level of about a refrigerator hum, and during the daytime, when the allowed limits are higher, nothing really even approaching normal conversation, except with very rare exceptions, per their own experts' report. So despite this, and despite the fact that I believe that in light of the information that they submitted, there really is no violation, because now we see how, what really happens, the prior testing, as you may recall, had to do with all three units operating at once, which is never, never, or hardly ever, maybe if it's 100 degrees at night, and we've got people all over the house, we'll have all three running for a short period of time. But usually, it's only one or two units running at a time, and that's borne out by their own records. That being said, and our conclusion being that there's no violation, and that if there is a mild violation, the exemption is definitely in order because of the steps we have taken, we are nevertheless willing to take additional steps at significant expense, and we're still prepared to do that. However, we are not willing to agree to relocate the units. One more fact on that is, according to our architect and our reading of the code, since our house, the backyard fronts a street, Torres, the front yard fronts Imperial Drive, having the units back in the backyard affronting the street is not permitted under the existing code anyway. So it's not really a viable option, in our view, under any analysis. If the Commissioners have any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
I do. Sir, you said that the sound curtain would bring down the noise by five decibels, and the, changing the, the window to a double pane? I didn't get that number. How much will it reduce the?
The expert report that we submitted from Acoustics, I don't believe comes up with a specific number.
Okay.
But he concluded that that would be a significant or a substantial reduction. It really depends, and the question was, okay, well, what's the sound rating of the existing window? But we were never provided that information, so we couldn't provide a more definitive analysis. Also, five decibels is the estimate. Again, a much more precise number can be done if we have further testing and Kinetics comes out and does, you know, real detailed formal drawings.
Thank you.
So to your knowledge that appellant's window, current window, has a single-pane window?
No, we don't know that for a fact. I mean, they pointed out to the fact that they had this information in their submission about their window, and I looked for it, and I saw this letter from California Deluxe Windows, the owner's letter, just saying, generally speaking, a double pane is better than a single pane. So even assuming they have a double pane, there are double panes, and then there are really good double panes, and we're willing to pay for a really good double pane.
You made a reference to their expert report. Was that Exhibit 4 that you were referencing?
It starts at page, I can tell you exactly what Exhibit is. I believe it may be, but I want to double check. I know it starts at page 25 of their submission. And, yes, it is Exhibit 4. And you'll note, I'm talking about these detailed reports there. The summary that they provide doesn't mention those figures. The summary doesn't mention those figures, it goes back to previous numbers, and you can draw a conclusion from that. The stated reason was because they weren't sure how many units were operating at the time. But that's normal operation. You take what you get. And again, if the, if any of the Commissioners wish to see the, the pictures of our tiny backyard, if you haven't seen them...
We have them.
You have them?
Yes.
Okay. Or the letter from the real estate broker, I've got extra.
Do you have any other speakers with you? You do have 15 minutes.
No.
Okay, thank you.
That's my wife, she's helping. Okay.
Those are the exceptions.
All right, thank you very much for your time and patience.
Yeah, I have Mr. Aaron Tell?
That's our expert.
Okay, so...
And he's, he's here to take questions, but...
Okay, so who's the name of the appellant?
Ramses?
Ramses.
Lena Ramses is a mother, and my name's Alex Ramses.
Okay, Ms. Ramses.
Please approach.
How much time?
15.
15 minutes?
Yeah, 15. You do need to fill out a card.
I did.
What's that?
No, yes, run your card. No.
That's all right.
I don't have one, but after, after your presentation, please fill out a card.
Mr. Kraus.
Here, I'll check throughout while he does.
Please state your name.
My name is Alex Ramses, and I'm representing the appellant, Lena Ramses.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank the panel to, to accepting our appeals and for us to appear in front of you again. This is our third appearance. Mr. Astorian's suggestion for mediation, I think, was successful in that we finally have been able to understand that there is a noise problem, and that the applicant is willing to take responsibility for that problem. My quick comments in regards to the presentation the applicant just recently made, in regards to Exhibit 4, page 28, noise measurements, and his other comments in regards to what his experts have said, what we have found during this whole procedure is that the applicant is quoting his professional experts. We have hardly any opinions or backups on their letterheads or emails. So we're getting hearsay information. His, his analysis of these noise measurements requires acoustical expertise. Our expert is here to comment on it, but I can briefly say that this by no means was done to show what normal operations are. In regards to noise measurements, we do have three large condensers and a side yard 15 feet from our property. Whether the machines run one, two, or three, the concern is, is that worst-case scenario, we have some, we have gross violations. The reason why we did these measurements is to try to ascertain what the nighttime ambient is. The city has conducted daytime ambient, the city has conducted violation testings, we provided a summary of these tests, which show that the city's last test, there were five tests conducted, that the, the applicant is in violation of close to 260% greater than allowed, and at nighttime, it's, it's much greater based on the ambient of 39 decibels.
And you, I'm sorry, can you, you're referencing five?
Page, well, page 28 is what the applicant referenced. And the purpose of the test was to determine the ambient. The ambient would be the lowest decibel reading that we can obtain, and that was 39 During mediation, the applicant has presented to city staff and to ourselves two technically feasible attenuation measures. One is a Louver enclosure, and a second would be sound curtains, a sound curtain wall. Our, Mr. Astorian's question in regards to whether this type of curtain would be approved by zoning or is allowed by zoning, I'd like to address that very, very quickly. Mr. Kraus mentioned that it is a type of screening, but actually, what the proposal is, is for a wall. And this is something that we received just seven days later, or seven days ago, and it's a line drawing that the applicant has provided. And I don't know if you've seen this line drawing. May I introduce it, then?
It's, I've seen it.
Oh, you have seen it, I'm sorry, yeah. So, as you can tell from the line drawing, it is not a, a screening. It is a wall. It is a fence, 36 feet in length. And there is no consideration for any sort of architectural integrity, any sort of aesthetic. And I don't believe that in regards to the material that is proposed, that it will be allowed based on, you know, in Title 30, under fences and walls, which specifically states masonry wrought iron, and with exceptions for wood, for any fences greater than 3 feet. Now, this is a possible solution. I think, as we mentioned in our email, it's half-baked, but it is something that we should Back in 2013, October 17th, 2013, the Code Compliance Inspector actually made a recommendation for a three-sided enclosure made of wood to be installed around each unit, perhaps with some acoustic-absorbing material. This was an email, page 159, in our, in our submission, in which the applicant replies, "Thank you very much for your..." very much for your message. This is exactly what I needed to know. I'll have enclosures installed and then hope that does the trick." October 17, 2013. We are now, three years later, and this is what we have, a line drawing. The fundamental question here is, 8.36.29 OK consists of three questions, or three sentences. Each sentence has the word "technical" in it. Neither myself, my brother, the applicant are acoustical experts. We cannot provide any technical information. That is why we hired an acoustical engineer, Mr. Batite, who represents Assentech, one of the largest and oldest acoustical engineering firms in this country. The last meeting, Ms. Landrigan, you asked for the applicant to retain acoustical engineer so that certain testings can be done. The purpose for those tests would have helped us to determine whether any of the mitigation measures that are being proposed by the applicant would have the expected results that would make sense not only to the economic costs that the applicant is willing to bear now, but the aesthetic ability to say that a fence is the right way to go, an enclosure is the right way to go. We, of course, have talked about location over and over, and the reason why we have done that is because we feel that the location is improper. The original permit application never specified the location. Back in 2003, within an interior setback, the machines needed to be enclosed on all four sides. They never were. We made a complaint in 2003. City staff came out to look at it, never informed us that an enclosure requirement was on the books. 2007, city staff came out again. We were not informed of that. In 2009, the ordinance changed. The ordinance changed to include screening. The machines are still not screened correctly. You can see the machine from the street setback. Now, screening probably will not be an attenuation measure, but it's a minor issue that is also an aesthetic issue. So we are concerned that as we go forward in trying to come up with a resolution, which we hope can be reached soon, because this has been a heavy and an emotional burden for, I'm sure, for both parties, we would like an effort by the applicant to provide some sort of expert opinion, not hearsay that, you know, he has a manufacturer, distributor that is coming up with acoustical curtains and a line drawing, or a acoustical expert that talks about a window that we have no specifications for, and the window itself. An open window will not block sound. Noise will come through. The STC rating that the applicant is proposing is an STC 50. An STC 50 window is an extremely rare window, which is, I'm sure, would cost a lot more than $500. But the point is that a window will not correct the violation. We will still have a violation at the property line. We will still hear the noise in front of our house. We will still have the noise polluting our backyard. So the windows themselves, we can discuss, but I will tell you that the double-pane windows that we installed many years ago are very high-quality windows. They are one inch in separation, which is about the highest quality residential windows. They're architecturally appropriate, and they probably have an STC rating of approximately 35. You can't test an STC rating once the window is installed. I mean, it's, it's, it's not sure if it's even, if it's even relevant to the discussion that we're having in regards to the violation at the property line. I bring up the acoustical engineering testing because Acoustics Group, which is, we believe, consulting with the applicant, has provided a letter July 26, 2016, and in the letter, they recommended enclosures, louvered enclosures. That was the first mediation meeting. At the second mediation meeting, we expected that these, we would get more details about these louvered enclosures, but for some reason, the louvered enclosures were replaced with these sound curtains, which, if you've seen the photographs, the website printouts, are quite hideous. But I do refer to the July 26 Acoustics Group letter, because there is, under Option One, noise reduction decibels at certain frequencies. And it lists the frequencies, and it reduces the mitigation that can be expected at each frequency by enclosing these condensers with this particular louver model. Reason I think it's important is because we haven't had the chance to test the frequencies. Only the applicant can test that. Without being able to actually know which frequencies are violating the noise ordinance, it would be difficult to assess whether the louvers will work, whether the curtains will work. But our expert has, has conferred with us that an acoustic wall can work. So we are going into the right direction, and I thank you for allowing mediation and the city staff for providing the resources to meet with us. But I will come back to the fundamental question. If there are other technically feasible measures that can be taken, then the exemption should be overturned. Thank you.
Sir, I do have a question from a gentleman. You mentioned that a open window is not a sound barrier. We get that. Not having a wall is not a sound barrier as well. But my question from you is very simple. After 13 years, and I mean this sincerely, and I'm asking, I'm being very sincere, after 13 years of going back and forth, what is it, what is it that will satisfy you? What is it? I'd like to hear that.
I actually have the same, I was gonna ask the same question.
Okay. After 13 years, we would like to be relieved of the noise.
Mitigation. Tell me what it is, in your opinion, that needs to be done today that would satisfy you.
Okay.
Other than relocation.
Other than relocation.
Or is there anything other than relocation that will satisfy you?
Well-
I didn't ask you, sir.
Certainly, the administrative part of it. We'd like the exemption to be overturned so that the, so that the applicant can be cited and he could actually come up with some real solutions. I don't believe line drawings and general letters is going to help us reach the decision any quicker or any sort of mediation. We want the noise to be stopped. The Glendale City Noise Ordinance is very, very clear in regards to how noise is treated. Glendale Noise, or Glendale Noise Ordinance was adopted from the City of Los Angeles Noise Ordinance. The State of California requires a noise element in the general plan.
Sir, I'm gonna stop you because you're kind of, you know, you're not answering whose question.
The question, the answer is, is we would like for the noise to be within the noise ordinance at the property line, and that is possible.
So let me continue. If the louvers are going to be the answer, or close to the answer, you'll be okay with that?
Absolutely.
Tell me which trumps the other, aesthetics or the noise reduction?
One does not trump the other, because what you're replacing is, and we've mentioned this in the mediation, is we're replacing industrial-level noise with an industrial-level, industrial-looking solution. So instead of coming home and hearing noise, we come home and see a factory, because that's what these curtains look like. These curtains are used for construction sites. We asked for one residential application of these curtains. We have not received that.
So then your preference would be louvers versus curtains?
We prefer an enclosure. Curtains, if we could have a solid wall and the curtains could be attached to a solid wall, could possibly be a solution. I don't think a beam and post with curtains hung is appropriate for an R1R area.
Any more questions? Speaker.
Oh, yeah, I do. The louvered structure, did you possibly pencil it out to see how much it would cost?
No, we can't, because the, and that's one of the things that we keep mentioning, is without access to the property, we can't do the appropriate calculations or the measurements. Certainly, the applicant couldn't, can provide that, or should have provided that. Point of order, as the, as the appellant, sorry if I'm out of line, but shouldn't we have gone first?
Yes.
Okay, okay. So what, now we're out of order, so the applicant now is going to be able to rebut me.
Now, I give you a chance to rebut.
Thank you so much.
What's a few minutes after 13 years, yes?
A lot, so, because we're finally-
Thank you. So I did realize that it was, it was out of order, so, yeah, thank you. Do we have any questions for the engineer, acoustic engineer?
I have a question from the staff. Do we have anything in the ordinance or anything that would say that the look of these curtains are not acceptable within the R1 zone?
We would have to take a look at and see what the actual aesthetics of it would look like. It would be subject to design review, so depending on-
Within the side yard? The side yard is reviewed by design review?
Not necessarily. Design review board would be done at the staff level, unless we decide that it's not something that we could approve, and then there's other methods for that.
Well, that's the question that I had. Would sound curtains on posts violate the zoning? And you said you don't think so.
There's not, it wouldn't be a zoning violation, but there would be design review, design implications that would-
And where they are in the setback, et cetera.
Yeah. I mean, if it's just a curtain hanging on a stick, that's probably, we probably wouldn't allow that. We might have some, maybe some kind of, you know, fencing to block that or some kind of, I don't even know. We'd have to take a look at it and see what it looked like, but, you know, a blanket, you know, hanging on a post would probably not be adequate in terms of design review.
Okay, so I guess the follow-up question would be, whatever they submit, it would, it would have to be approved by the city staff before they-
Correct, yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Cherry, do I have a question from a Mr. Batite?
Okay, so I'd like to bring up Mr. Batite, engineer.
How many minutes?
Good evening.
How many minutes?
Are we fine?
He has a card.
Yeah, yeah, there's a card here.
Fifteen?
No, just a question.
I have a question, Mr. Shunat. You had referenced the staff report that there are options to bring the equipment in compliance. Name me two.
Two options to?
Bring the equipment into compliance.
Okay. Well, it depends on how you look at it. If you look at it from a standpoint of-
Name me two.
Okay, one is-
Your best bet.
As an acoustic consultant, you put a wall up to block the sound, or you worry about location, source, path, receiver. So you worry about how, what distance and where that is compared to the receiver. And, you know, if I was looking at compliance of the noise ordinance and someone wanted to put a noisy thing there, I would look at the property and find the best place for the location, and I would also suggest putting a wall up that was solid and blocked the path and line of sight of that space.
Okay, so-
The louver, the louvered option is probably, for residential condensing units, is probably not likely, because the louver would take too much static pressure, there wouldn't be enough air conditioning for the, for the heat pumps themselves, and they wouldn't function properly if you fully enclosed them. So that one's probably not likely. You could do a three, you know, it would be possible to do a three-wall enclosure as long as the inside included acoustic absorptive material, so you weren't bouncing the noise and just having it bounce and spill over the top. If you did a wall, because of the way this property is, you could actually push the sound up over the adjacent space's roof, so that it would reduce the noise, and you wouldn't necessarily worry about that well effect of the sound kind of bouncing between the two properties.
So what you, what you're referencing to is what Mr. Ramsdott was talking about, solid wall and curtains.
Correct. Well, a solid wall, so, and this is part, a long time ago, I talked about a solid wall that was two pounds per square foot at least, and was continuous. Doesn't necessarily need to be curtains. It could be a brick wall, it could be a masonry wall, as long as it's about two pounds per square foot. Now, that's a surface, I'm talking about a surface density, which means, you know, you're defining the thickness of this wall, and then you're, from that, defining, that's, that amount of mass will stop enough sound and the low-frequency sound from going through. So it could be something, you know, he doesn't necessarily, we don't necessarily need to do both, something nice and then this curtain behind it. It could be a solid wall that's nice, that has a mass to it, and has a sufficient height and sufficient length to block that sound.
Sufficient height being what?
And not refracted.
Well, so that's the fun part. You know, you have to calculate what's the noise ordinance, how much noise reduction do you need, and in order to get that, you change the path difference between the top, you know, and that dictates what the top of that wall is. But because I don't have access to do the measurements right at the unit, and I don't have access to do, get the sightlines along the properties, I, you know, I haven't calculated that out. Additionally, it would cost time on my part, and, you know, it's, normally, at the beginning, someone putting the noisy piece would, that has to comply with a noise ordinance, would hire me as opposed to the other side.
Roughly.
Well, in this case, it's easy, because if it's, on height-wise, you know, if you're enough to block it so that it's, the noise is going right over the roof of the Ramsdott's house, then we're, we're right at the, you know, we're at probably 15 dB, which knocks us down to where, you know, to compliance with the noise ordinance.
So what is that distance, do you know? How tall that is?
How tall that is? I don't off the top of my head, but, I mean, six foot tall.
Line of sight, right?
Yeah, well, you would want to block, it's more than line of sight. Line of sight will give you 5 dB.
Okay.
So probably six feet would be plenty, but, you know, I, to absolutely confirm that, it's, it's a number that can be defined.
Thank you. Any more questions? Okay, thank you. So we'll have Mr. Kronther come up.
Very much. I'll be brief. Just to answer the question that was just asked of the expert, I took photographs of the line of sight between the units and the window in question. The top condenser unit is actually already over the line of sight in terms of barrier, so you wouldn't need a very high curtain at that point in order to totally block out the line of sight from the units. The second condenser unit is a little lower, so the curtain would have to be a bit higher. Likewise, with the third unit, it would have to be a little higher still, but probably within six, eight feet, even for the lowest unit, would, would do that. I actually agree with the expert that the, the reason the louvered option was not followed was, was really twofold. Number one, the kinetics person that builds the louvers agreed that, given the location of the units, it would muffle the airflow too much and would cause the units to break down. And if there was some way you could maybe do it to have individual louvers for each unit, it would end up costing something over $10,000, and you'd be total, over $10,000 total, and you'd risk damage to the units. So that was one of the reasons that wasn't followed. The curtains, in terms of aesthetics, I'm told by Jeff Hansel at Kinetics that they come in many colors, including a color that just about matches our house. Also, we have a separate contractor installing wooden posts to make them as decorative-looking as we can. It's our property, too, and we don't want to have it reduce in its value or aesthetics. In terms of the line drawings and the references to, no, you know, no specific opinion from the expert, I mean, we've submitted a detailed report, and I do have an email from Mr. Wu to me, which I can provide if you wish, that says, "You're looking at about 5 dB of noise reduction from all three condensers running with the noise curtain system." So that really addresses that. Mr. Ramsdott also talked about the testing in Exhibit Four, the purpose of it being to test the ambient sound. But if you look at the document, that's not what it does. Testing results number one, location one, is to test the ambient sound, and test location number two was the test for the units as operational, the non-ambient sound from the units themselves. So I disagree with his characterization of the sound units. The testing report speaks for itself. The STC rating, in his written report from Acoustics Group, Inc., which you have, Dr., Mr. Wu, said that the STC rating should be 45 to 50. So I gave the highest number. So if 50 STC-rated window is rare, maybe a 45 STC-rated window is not so rare. So, you know, based on all of the economics and all the work that has been done to date, it looks like the noise-control curtains are the best option. Building a concrete mason- Building a concrete masonry wall or other such structure along the entire length of the property would be approximately $38,000. That's in the report of our architectural expert. If it's just for a shorter distance, it would be $19,000. Noise control curtain is a lot better. But if there is another enclosure that won't damage the equipment, that's $5,000 or less, that's acceptable to the city and to the appellant, we're more than willing to consider it. We've come up with the best solution we can at this time, and that appears to be the noise control.
Thank you, Mr. Cronther.
Thank you.
So we'll invite Mr. Ramsdott to come back.
Once again, the applicant is trying to make a, an expert opinion on our testing, and since we hired the expert, I don't believe he should be commenting on what the tests were actually for. The tests were for measuring ambient. We did two locations simply to find out what the ambient is at one side of the house and the other side of the house. By no means is it representative of what the normal operating conditions are of, of the equipment. I do want to mention very quickly the, finding a new location for the, the equipment. The applicant provided some photographs. One of the photographs, and this was late this afternoon, shows his backyard, and I believe it clearly shows that there is a wall, there is space for the, the equipment to be located. We have now gotten five estimates in regards to what the location, finding a new location for the equipment is, and the range is $4,500 to $6,000. So we're well within the same price range. The concern is, the applicant has now mentioned three times that the sound curtains can only, best case, reduce the sound by five decibels. The applicant is, by the city's testing, is in violation by 13 decibels. By our measurement, close to 18. Five decibels is not going to do it.
The, the, are you done? I have a question. The estimate that you have for relocation, does that include the ducts and electrical work and all kinds of other work? Or is it just taking the equipment, putting it somewhere else?
It, once again, it's a rough estimate, because we've made several requests to allow HVAC contractors to come out and to examine the system. That's been refused in both mediation meetings. I don't think it would be a hardship for at least one, two, or three HVAC contractors to come out and actually look at that. I think it's telling that the applicant used two HVAC contractors, and none of them had made any sort of reference to moving the equipment. I believe that the reason for that is because the cost is very reasonable.
So are you suggesting that they just don't want to move it?
Correct. They don't want to hear their own air conditioning noise.
Or maybe it's what they proposed, as the area is very small, then they would actually lose the backyard?
After, after so many years, this is the first time we've seen the area, so, you know, I mean, it's, it's hard to determine that because we brought it up many, many times, as, as he said. I, I think just a simple examination of the yard, I, I think there's a great location for it. It looks shady, it looks like there's enough space for four or five condensers. It would not require much in regards to the line, the line sets or, or the electrical. I just think it would be just fair for an HVAC contractor, maybe we choose one, he choose one, and, and get some real-life estimates. As opposed to our HVAC contractor looking from the street and trying to make a determination.
Let me ask you a question. Normally, when neighbors build a masonry block, I mean, you know, masonry block wall is a nice, you know, nice wall.
Decorative.
When they agree to do that, normally they share 50% on both sides to prop that wall, because it benefits both sides. Is that something that you're willing to do if the final answer is building a masonry wall?
I cannot give you the answer, because we have not been able to, we, we don't have any testing, so I would, I would, I would be loathe to agree to that and then find out that the mitigation is not enough.
But that's what your expert has been telling us, that the best result that you can expect is through erecting a masonry enclosure.
Now, the, an acoustic wall doesn't necessarily need to be masonry. The two pounds per square foot can be, can be achieved with other material, not just, just masonry. Now, the burden of proof is on, on the applicant, and, and I don't want to continue to dig my heels in, but this has been going on for three years, and there's been many, many procedural errors that have occurred during this process. We've had to fight very, very hard and carry a very heavy burden just to get here. And so asking us to share a cost in which we've been, we did not cause, I'm going to have to say, we, I'm going to, I have to withhold my opinion on that. To actually get, come up with a, with a, with a real test, I don't know why he can't hire an acoustical engineer to come out and do testing. I, I don't understand that. We've, we've, I just can't.
So let me ask you another, so he takes all the mitigating measures to rectify this problem, and it shows an effort. There's so much that one person can do.
I understand.
And that is, let's say, the final, you know, mitigating measure is to prop this sound curtain wall. I, I don't, maybe it's, you know, it may not be pleasing to your eyes, but, you know, when he does that, you know, I mean, he has shown his, you know, will, goodwill to, to comply as, as best as he can. And that may be the only solution that he has. So, you know, if we go down that, you know, road, I mean, that's probably something that you're gonna be, you know, be facing. You know, if you, I mean, the basement, you know, it seems like the best answer to this is a masonry wall, but if, if not that, then the other option is the sound wall.
Well, the, the two pounds per square foot can be achieved through, through wood. It could be certainly achieved with, once again, I, I don't believe that the, the sound curtains are an appropriate measure, because we do not believe that it's a permanent solution. We do not think the sound curtains have a, a, a long lifespan. They're typically used in construction sites for projects that have a limited life. Where we have seen them, they are replaced on five to eight years. There's no guarantee that five years from now, those curtains will be in any shape or form. I mean, they're not attractive to begin with, but you can imagine after the winds and after the dirt and so on, that it's going to be a disgusting mess. And so I think a solid wall or something aesthetically that would block it from, from our view would be appropriate. But once again, we cannot agree to anything, and I don't, once again, we feel like we're being pressured here, but the applicant mentioned that if we agree, then kinetics will then come up with a, a more extensive study. Why can't we have the extensive study now? I, you know, that's, you know, but I, I think that we are on the right path, and that just the sound curtains themselves, I don't see how the design review board could accept something like that, it's just, it's just not appropriate.
I don't think we agreed that this definite, necessary is going to go to the design review board.
It's staff, for you.
Staff is going to.
Make sure it meets code.
Yes.
Are these, is this considered a wall or a fence?
What, what is considered?
The acoustic, the acoustic, the line drawing that you have in front of you.
Well, that's a staff question, we'll ask them.
We would have to take a look to see what actually ends up being proposed to determine kind of what we would equate it as. I mean, if it's, I mean, you could probably call it a fence or a wall, or it can be an enclosure, it all depends on kind of what we're looking at at the time.
I have a question for the engineer, because, you know, please, because we're trying to find a, you know, solution here.
Sure.
You mentioned masonry block wall is the best, you know, solution here, but, you know, what does a two-pound per square foot, what does it entail? Does a wooden fence, the one that we see normally?
No, not something you would see normally. No, I'm not saying, I, I don't, I'm refraining from saying a masonry wall, I'm just saying a wall that is at least, two pounds per square foot is, is basically the weight of 5/8 drywall, and that, if you throw it in and do a test on it, is about an STC 23. So that's going to get you, that's kind of where the wall limitation for reduction is, is right around STC 23. So it can be, you know, obviously you're not putting drywall outside, but if you, and 3/4-inch plywood is a little bit lighter than that, but it's around that kind of, that kind of weight. So, and, yeah, it doesn't have to be as big as masonry. The other thing is, is that, in all of these, is, you know, the, the real thing is, is whether, is it reasonable, is the Glendale noise ordinance reasonable? Can we actually do mitigation to this noise ordinance, or is an exemption, you know, necessary for other places? Because this is a resident, you know, these are residential units, and all we're trying to do is, is put some, you know, typical mitigation that the ordinance in any other location would require.
What you're saying is that 3/4-thick fence with maybe some, maybe sound curtain in the back of it?
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm not sure you would need to add a, a sound curtain, but something, yeah, something that's, that's substantial, you know, not like super-heavy, but has a mass to it and is continuous. It has to be continuous, you can't have holes in it, it has to go to the ground, you can't have like a base, you know, a hole, like a gap at the base.
Thank you.
Yep.
I have a question for staff. And it was my understanding that outdoor units do need an enclosure when they are visible and ask, why was this not part of what staff enforced as part of the code?
To answer that question, I don't really know exactly when the enclosure, when the stuff was put up, I guess, the screen or enclosure, whatever else. When, when it was installed, at that time, if it was installed, I don't remember what the date was, I think 2003.
Three.
Through 2003. It would have required an enclosure then, if it was, or screening, if it was within the setback. So if, if, I'm not sure why it didn't have it at the time, or if it did or not, because I didn't approve the plan, so I'm not really sure what got approved or what didn't. Or if it got approved with an enclosure or a screening, then never put it up, inspector missed the fact that it was in the setback and signed off on the permit that way. So it's really hard to say what the actual situation was at the time. But from what I understand, they do have screening now, which would put them in compliance with the existing code.
They're screening now?
I believe that's correct.
Thank you for that.
Any more questions?
Not at this moment.
We do have a speaker card from the public, so Victor Ramsdott.
Actually, may I ask a question? Is Mr. Ramsdott part of the family? Would he not then be part of the appellant and should have spoken at the same time?
Are you living at the same address?
Yeah, partially, yeah.
Okay, so then, then you are part of the appellant?
Yeah.
Okay.
Never mind, thank you. Thank you.
I don't have a problem hearing what you have to say, so long as it's new evidence.
So we'll give you three minutes then.
And, and, and please bear in mind that we will allow them the same opportunity as well, so.
Just by point of clarification for the planning commission, normally we would inquire as to who is on the appellant or the applicant's team and, and ask them to resolve or decide who will be their representative if they want to share that, that time. But I think Commissioner Astorin has found a good solution, you know, offering some time to both, both sides for additional information, separate and apart, and.
So the purpose we didn't, I suggested what I did is because at the beginning, we were not clear or did not ask who's who.
Yeah, I apologize, because when I walked in, I was, I was a little bit.
No worries, the, the objective here is to provide, you know, a fair amount of time for both the applicant and the appellant to provide information to you.
We're trying to bring this 13-year-old dispute to an end.
Three minutes?
All right.
Three minutes.
Three minutes, please.
Hi, good evening, and commissioners, chair commissioner, and staff. You know, we, we heard like 13 years is going on, but really, this fight has been going on with the city and with the applicant, three years. We took the test, the tests were taken by the city back in 2013, and when the applicant was found gross violations four times in the course of 11 months. So from there, the applicant has shown very minimal attenuation measures. In fact, he has absolutely misrepresented some of them. The, the quiet fence enclosure that is now existing is not per the specifications of the manufacturer. They're right butt up against the, the, the condenser. They are supposed to be about 12 inches from the condenser grill, and that is, the way he installed it, see, what I'm trying to say, the example is all throughout, he's been misrepresenting different facets of this case. And, you know, he has said, these are, his units, his condenser units are amongst the quietest, and he has said that some of the, they're the best quality in the market today, and that is not the case. You have 80 decibels for the specs that, and, and the city attorney, the assistant city attorney of code enforcement had requested the specs for the machines. And there's an email in that, we, in our rebuttal, and the applicant did not comply. He did not come up with the specs, and so therefore, misrepresenting these kind of machines, his panels, you know, just having, just, you know, just not trying to come up with a solution, as, you know, my mother and my father were trying to work out for many, many years. And he refused. He, he always stood behind the fact that, you know, he's got a permit. But when we got to the stage of when we finally started testing with the city in 2013, it's really sad, because 2013, at the end of, we have had assurances by the code compliance inspector that there would be enforcement. All along, he has said that this would be a misdemeanor enforcement action. And when it came down to the time when the code compliance inspector told me that there would be a, an exemption request, the way we, really, the pivotal date is really important, is May 22, 2014, the request for exemption was made. Yeah, and that is where we are very concerned about that date, because the fact that the email request by the applicant to the code compliance inspector was for a request for And that information that he provided, there was no evidence, there was zero evidence, and we did not have a chance to rebut that information. We did not have a chance to look at that and examine it, and we would have really shut down the doors right then, because the July 10, 2014 exemption was found null and void because of the problems we have pointed out in our report. We have shown that testing procedures by the city, some problems there.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right.
So we'll give you.
Due process, our due process rights have been violated, yeah.
So we'll give you an opportunity to rebut.
I don't believe there's really anything substantive that was said, so I don't believe I need to, to rebut it. I'll, I'll just point out, you know, one, one picture here, which shows the current screening, it should be somewhere in your file. I am concerned that the screening not be too close, because I don't want it to interfere with the operation of the units. So I'll just respectfully submit that some kind of screening is appropriate, we will always maintain it, and we'll do whatever else we can to reduce the sound. But again, all, with respect to the degree of sound and the violation that they say exists, their own steward acoustical consultant person says basically we're all in violation, because a high-efficiency unit is 73 to 70. because a high efficiency unit is 73 to 78 DVA, and we're way below that.
Thank you.
So thank you very much.
No. Thank you. Okay. So we'll close our public hearing, and we'll go into preparation. Would you like to go first?
I can get started without any hesitation.
Commissioner Astorin, go ahead.
First of all, we have a letter dated July 10, 2014, a decision letter from the City of Glendale, that the apparatus, the air conditioning system and so forth, is not in violation of the zoning code, but there is an issue with the sound and the noise ordinance that we have. However, there is an exemption granted to it. So that's the baseline that I'm starting, what I'm about to tell you. I've heard, last time, when we suggested for the applicant, the appellant, to get together and resolve this thing, is because the way I looked at it, this was a, you know, dispute amongst, between two neighbors that could have, very easily be handled, but apparently I will not agree with any relocation of the equipment to anywhere else in their property. I would agree to some sort of a wall, not masonry, not at the cost of $30,000 or $40,000. They're already on record to wanting to spend about $5,000 or $6,000. I don't know what that screening is going to be, the material, and how it's going to look. That, it's not, within my purview to decide how it is. I'm not technical. That is something that will be applied to the City of Glendale, and they will either approve or disapprove or make modifications to. In my opinion, when you base, and I'm talking about the Ramstoffs at this moment, when you base after the last meeting, the back and forth, because we've been privy to the emails, back and forth amongst the two of you, I have seen movement on their part, no movement on your part, rigidity on your part. And that was troubling to me. I was expecting that you would engage them, sit down, and talk about their solution, and suggest any differences that you had with them. Having said that, again, I would agree to some sort of a screening, that is acceptable to the City of Glendale, that would minimize the noise effect. And the suggestion of changing the window, your window, now, if the screening is going to take care of it, I would waive that as well. With that, you have my thoughts on this.
I have your thoughts, but actually, on the case itself, then you are kind of leaning towards overturning the exemption.
Well, in actuality, what I'm suggesting is very simple. What I'm suggesting is whatever is being suggested by the appellant needs to be modified and accepted, as opposed to relocation, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, because you're putting the condition on.
Right.
Yeah, okay. Any, any other thoughts? Commissioner Menucha?
Well, I'm of the opinion of overturning as well. Relocating, to my mind, is, is too extreme, too extreme a course of action. Although, in terms of putting a wall, I would, I would definitely prefer the permanent variety. Now, if the wall is successful in lowering the noise to acceptable levels, that's fine. Otherwise, I would be amenable to having the process staggered. So first, we try the wall. We built the wall. It's a solid wall. It goes all the way across line of sight and all of that. I am not in agreement to using these curtains. The problem is, they are, as, as permanent as they like to be advertised, they are temporary. They're not permanent, permanent. If that's such a thing. So then, the question becomes, how do we hold the homeowner responsible for maintaining this? Today, it's the crumple's, and, but we know that they may sell tomorrow. And then what? How do we, you know, this obligation would need to run with the land, and it becomes a mess. Let's have a permanent wall. But in order to reduce costs, I would, I would be amenable to having the wall build tests done. If the sound level is not low enough, then we can put some sort of material inside to double up. I would not, the idea of including the changing of the window of the appellant's property, to me, would be, as I understand it, she wants to open her window. Okay. So right there. So it becomes sort of pointless to do that. So let's do our best with the wall and the sound baffling, and take it from there. But basically, yes, I would vote to overturn.
Okay.
Let me ask you a question, Commissioner. When you, when you refer to a wall, we're not talking about a masonry wall.
Uh-uh.
We're talking about the least, the least costly, so long as it gives them the near desired.
It's a purpose wall. It's a purpose wall.
I think that's what we're talking about. Commissioner Svejic?
I didn't, I think I didn't see the motions for this.
There aren't any attached that I can find.
So we are, we are coming up with a motion? Is that, is that what we're doing?
No, we're deliberating right now.
Okay. I mean, eventually, we'll come up with a motion?
Yes. The question before the commission is whether or not to turn, overturn the exemption. And that was an exemption based on the technical and feasibility of complying with the noise ordinance and being defined as, they have employed such noise limitations, such noise limitations cannot be complied with despite the use of mufflers, shields, sound barriers, and/or other noise reduction device or techniques during the operation of the equipment.
So when we drop the motion language, we may ask you to help us again, to do that.
So I thought we were going to overturn, and then it goes back to staff, and staff, then we do it all?
My thought is that we, we can sustain it with further direction.
That's right.
You can do that.
Or we can overturn it without direction.
You could overturn it. The applicants would then be in a position of attempting to mitigate that noise as completely as they possibly can. They could reapply for an exemption at that point. And then, of course, testing would need to be done to determine whether or not any of these techniques have been employed or feasible. They may requalify for an exemption, should all those noise reduction techniques prove not to reduce it below the noise levels.
Which is why we are here.
Which is, is why we're here at this point in time.
Which is why we'll continue coming back. So I, you know, I just want to be on record. I am, if we are going to do anything with the exemption, it'll be exactly as you suggested, Ms. Landrigan, that is either augmenting it or, you know, do something with it, so.
In my opinion, I think that is probably the most productive way to go, and, and a sure outcome than taking it back to the beginning. That's my, that's my thought process. My, I know that when we were talking about overturning, I was, I'm glad it was clarified here, because once you overturn it, it can indeed, under my previous experiences, come back again. There's nothing to stop you again from reapplying. So in, in that understanding, my, my inclination is to sustain the deputy director's decision, granting an exemption, and require that further mitigation measures be employed. One is that the enclosure be designed and installed by an acoustical engineer to meet what is considered the maximum attenuation of that sound. I, too, am not in favor of moving them. I, I think that that would be my solution to this, and not dealing with the window. I agree. I like to have my windows open, but I, that's just a first pass on this.
If I may inquire, is there a timeframe within which that condition would be, need to be performed?
I would say yes.
Yes. We'll have to put that on. So coming back to Commissioner Svejic.
Yes. Yeah, so thanks for clarifying, because I actually have to agree. I would want this to actually sustain the deputy director's decision. I am not sure if we could actually ask the neighbors to work on a wall, because I don't know the pricing, but I would, I would like you guys to work on it, or I would like it to be in a way, if it would be possible, to possibly put something more permanent. I agree with you, sir, as they might sell the house in few years, and there might be an issue, let's say, five or 10 years down the road, if the new residents do not maintain the curtains. I do agree with the, with the no need for windows. You're correct. I mean, the moment that you open the window, that would go, I mean, that, the whole double pane window, and trying to control the noise level would go out the window. And I don't think there would be any need for an actual enclosure. I think the first step should be to actually direct a wall, and then actually see where they would go from there. It sounds like, from what I heard from the expert, that that should help with the, with the noise levels being reduced to an acceptable point. And I don't know, I guess we have to come up with an actual.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
I think she has something to say.
I'm sorry. I don't think it's fair for us to limit it by price, because I think, you know, one has to meet the intent and the letter of the law. I, I think that the acoustical engineer can deal with that in a, in a honorable way with the, with the resident who is going to solve it. But I, I think it's unfair to put a price on it, because then you're putting a limit on solving the problem, is mine. And I think that if there's an unreasonable amount for that, that's probably going to be brought back to us. But that, to me, I think, should not be the limit at the beginning.
The reason why I did bring that up was because the original reason they were granted these.
It's because of the cost.
Is because of the cost. But I don't, I don't know, I mean, I'm going to ask our legal team. I don't know if we're even able to let them, I mean, tell them exactly what we want, or we kind of have to let them come up with the, with the solution. I'm not exactly sure what we are supposed to do. Propose something, and have them go and come back with a solution, or actually tell them what we want? I'm not sure if.
Well, and if I may, I'm sorry we're having this dialogue. I believe that it needs to be designed by an acoustical engineer, and it must have all of the technical background to, to sustain putting it in there. I don't think we want to do an experimental cost element, have one put in, and then further come back to this, you know, resident, and ask him to continue to add to it. That's sort of what's happening now. I would like that not to be our method. That seems really ineffective and costly.
Commissioner Menucha?
I would like to point out that the exemption was granted because it does not appear that there are other measures you can take to reduce the sound generated, et cetera, et cetera. By definition, there's an internal inconsistency, if you're saying, we're going to uphold the decision, but we're going to go back and build a wall. So no, you're not. You need to overturn the decision with instruction to the applicant to build a sound baffling wall such that the ambient sound measurements at the appellant's property meets the City of Glendale ordinance.
Can we have a little clarification from the legal department? When we do, let's say, render a decision here, sustaining, let's say, this appeal with conditions, is that something that after they certain that they have to come back to the staff or to the commission again on this?
The best way to implement the concept of sustaining would be to have them perform that and have them come back. So, because I agree with Commissioner Menucha, it presumes by its, the, the section presumes that the activities have already been undertaken. And despite having undertaken all of those, you know, reasonably feasible techniques, they have, at that point, still been unable to render the noise situation within, within the code. So it begs that question of, you can't really condition to do something that was supposed to already have occurred, but you can direct, you can continue it and direct them to perform those conditions and have those tests done. And at that point, if it's still ineffective, then you could sustain it, despite having done all that, and test whether or not those mitigation measures, those techniques, have been reasonably employed. Or you can overturn it at that point, if you don't agree that they have done everything feasible. But, again, as I said, if it is overturned, the applicant is, can always go and do additional things and request an exemption. So unfortunately, it does create a situation where it's not like a traditional initial approval where you can condition it. It is the way that it's been drafted, that it does beg needing to come back to you if you don't want to make a sustaining, a decision tonight to sustain it.
So rather than sustaining or overturning it, continue it with the conditions for them to come back to us again?
Directing them to come back by a date certain, and, and then you'll know whether or not those, those measures have been implemented. So that is an option for the commission.
Right. Commissioner Svejic?
Yeah, let me ask you a question. I mean, what is wrong with modifying the decision that was made by Team FOIA at that date? We're not, it's, you're not, you're sustaining, you are sustaining it, but modifying. What's, what's wrong with that, with that approach? As opposed to, we have to, you know, the exemption has to be overturned, then they have to come back and so on. Why can't we put the conditions on right now, under the auspice of modification of a decision that has already been made?
I think it was what, he was.
Well, I think you're right.
Commissioner Menucha is suggesting it needs to be overturned, they didn't come back.
Yeah, because by definition, an exemption means that there's nothing you can do about it.
Yeah, that's what it was.
Well, you can't tell them, then, well, we know there's nothing you can do about it, so why don't you go and do something about it?
Yeah.
Well, we are modifying that decision.
You can't.
You can't modify it.
So.
An exemption is an exemption.
So Commissioner, I think what the legal department is suggesting is that for us to, to do that, give direction is to continue it with the conditions, and then, when they come back, when everything is exhausted, then we can make a decision to sustain it or overturn it at the time.
When you say continue it with, with conditions.
With conditions is direction.
Directions, I'm directions, directions, yes.
So I guess the directions would be, we would ask each party to have an acoustic engineer and come up with a design of how they would mitigate this. Is that correct?
You would like to entertain, to form the.
My, my entertainment would be to overturn the exemption.
Overturn the exemption.
I'm happy to put that motion on the board.
Is that the motion on the floor right now, to overturn?
That's what I have, and with that, and it can either be seconded or it can die without effect.
So I want you to do a formal, formal.
I, um.
I'm sorry, before you do that.
Okay.
Well, when I have a motion on the floor, it has to be seconded, and then you can talk.
Sure, of course.
Sorry. I do know Robert's rules.
So, of course.
My, my, my recommendation is to, my motion is to overturn the community development directors. director’s decision granting an exemption for the property at 1348 Imperial Drive, Glendale, California 91207. And I can, do I need to read the exemption number? I don’t know where it is. Oh, it might be in here.
You can actually refer to exemption letter dated July 10, 2014, so...
Or 13...
Or N Noise 1305975.
N Noise.
N Noi, pertaining to case noise violation number N Noise 1305975.
So, we have motion, we have support.
Support.
We have a support, so, I guess we do a roll call.
I guess you do a...
All right, you can have a conversation.
We have a conversation before, because I’m sorry.
Yes?
Yes. I haven’t made a decision. You, you had a proposal as well, I wanted to hear your proposal before.
Well, what, you know, the directions that, because of, seems like there could be a solution, without taking position about sustaining or overturning the case, to have continued this case with the direction to, again, I know that happened with Commissioner Sestorian, going back to, to applicant, appellant, to have it, continue with the directions, for them to actually come up with this exhaust, the last result, as the, the acoustic engineer suggested. Seems like there is a way to, to mitigate this with the three-quarter plywood or some sort of a fencewood, you know, that could do that with the direction, as Ms. Landrigan said, of the acoustic engineer. Then, and then at the time when that measure was exhausted, come back with the acoustical data, then make the decision then, is, is that kind of direction that I was thinking of.
Why I tend to not favor that direction is I don’t think it’s our place to do that, I think that it’s the technical place of the staff to do that. If we keep coming back, I think that that is outside of our purview, it is also outside of all of our expertise. I believe that if it goes back and it’s applied for another exemption, then the staff will take care of all of that information, and the final decision either will be to either grant the exemption again. There are different attenuating measures that exist now, 13 years later, so I think it can be remedied. But I am favoring overturning for that reason, because I believe that is a more appropriate path for, for that to happen, instead of it for it to go through us under direction.
What happens in the direction that we, you get staff involved?
What if nothing is attenuated under our direction? It’s, you know, it’s a two-headed hydra.
Okay, so, we do have motion and support, so...
I’m, I’m just going to say this. Fundamentally, I’m against overturning the exemption, because now you have a brand-new open field, and that, to me, is not acceptable. Now, if the city attorney can suggest a regiment that we can uphold the exemption and get what we want, because, look, the way that it’s done, a decision by the city has been made, and there is an exemption that has been granted. These folks didn’t have any obligation to go ahead and do anything over and above what the city has suggested. They have gone out of their way, suggested modifications to be neighborly, I think. And if there is any other way of attaining that, I’ll be happy to...
I think that option was suggested with that continuance with the direction.
Well, then you have a motion on the table. What are you doing?
So, procedure is then, we have motion and support, we go through that, and then we get under the motion and support, and then go through that vote? Okay.
You have a motion and a second on the floor.
Yeah, on the floor.
From Commissioner Landrigan and seconded.
Let’s take a vote.
This is for the overturning of the...
Overturning, yes.
Correct.
Yeah.
Planning Commissioners, Sestorian.
No.
Landrigan.
Aye.
Menucha.
Aye.
Shabazian.
Yes.
And Chairperson Lee.
No. So, with a vote of three to two, it has been overturned.
So, now what? What’s the next step? There is no step, right? Bob’s your uncle, is what it is.
Members of the planning commission, the step is that the, many techniques were discussed tonight, and the, the applicant has the option of employing all of those techniques and having it tested to determine whether or not employing of those techniques will render the sound with, compliant with our noise ordinance. No exception is required under those circumstances. If, after having actually employed all of those techniques, there’s still a deviation from our noise standard, at that point, the applicant could reapply for an exception, establishing and demonstrating all of the techniques that have been done have nonetheless not yielded compliance with the noise ordinance.
Yeah, so the appeal of the Deputy Director’s decision for noise code violation, case number N Noise 1305975, has been overturned.
May I just suggest something, since this is done, and we weren’t going to direct you? I think that the technical expert did give some comments. If you guys do want to work together, it sounds like one of the best options is to build a wall. I mean, we built a, a wall, I mean, with our neighbor and we, we split the cost, talk to each other. I mean, that’s the best way to come up with a solution.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Sestorian. Next item on the agenda is...
Before we go there, I have a question for, for the city attorney.
Can we have a spa break?
Yeah, we’ll have a five-minute recess.
Is that what you said, spa break?
That’s what I heard.
Small.
But it recessed for five minutes?
I need a spa break, but that’s not what I have.
We all do, this is why...
Ten minutes for.
That’s how it sounded to me.
[inaudible]
You've got to come to my house to hear my neighbors' air conditioning.
Yeah, we're back from the recess. Today's Wednesday, September 21st, 2016, Planning Commission meeting. So, next item on the agenda is Planning Commission item, new business subdivision of land.
We already did that one, you're sorry.
You did that. So, okay. Number two, code amendment, case number PZC 1622217. Can we have a staff report, please? Ms. Asp.
Well, thank you. I'm getting there, I'm getting there. I don't need to.
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. Tonight, this agenda item is a... Back in April, City Council initiated a zoning code amendment to have staff investigate expanding the rules for accessory wall signs to all tenants of a building, including those on upper stories where currently they are limited to the first and second floor occupancies. Also, Council asked staff to look into reducing the required minimum lot width needed for circular driveways in single-family zones. This works. I'll do that. Currently, to start with accessory wall signs, the current rules allow for wall signs for each ground floor or second floor occupancy that faces a dedicated street, alley, mall, or parking area at a one-to-one ratio. So, basically, the length of the occupancy equals the square footage of the sign area with a 20-square-foot minimum. However, what this means is that the third level and above of those occupancies are generally not entitled to wall signs. However, other sign options exist for situations like this. For instance, we have a high-rise wall sign allowance. It applies to floors that are six...or buildings that are six stories and higher. Something that you would kind of identify with this is the Nestle Building, at the top of the building. And we also allow for accessory ground signs at approximately 200 square feet and 25 feet in height that can cover multiple tenancies of a building.
May I ask a question on that? The ground signs are per street, correct?
Per frontage.
Right, per frontage, thank you. I think that's important to state.
Okay. So, the proposed revisions that we looked into is to allow any occupancy in any building the ability to seek permission for an accessory wall sign. We've limited it to two specific downtown-specific districts, the Gateway and Broadway Center District. We would still limit the wall signs to the first and second floor, however, we would only consider this through a sign program. This is a map of the two areas. I think it was attached also in your staff report. They're highlighted kind of in the blue-shaded area. It's mainly the districts that have high-rises, so North Brand and a little north of the freeway, and just a little section kind of above the Galleria, north of the Galleria. So, through a sign program that we're recommending, there's four standards that we apply, that signs will be compatible with the project architecture and surroundings, shall not unduly compete with or obstruct other business signs, shall exhibit a harmonious design, mounting an illumination theme for the entire lot or site, and shall be consistent with any applicable plans, guidelines, or related to redevelopment project area. The recommendation to go with the sign program alternative is to address any concerns that staff kind of had with related to the location and number of signs, which can lead to sign clutter, which is the point of sign codes and programs. It's likely in this scenario that all tenants will not be able to have a wall sign because of limited space and through the process of ensuring that it's compatible with the building and the architecture. And there may be a possibility that a typical ground-floor use, a bank, a restaurant, something like that, may not have a sign if the area gets used up by upper-floor tenants. So, that is a possibility in this scenario. This is just a picture of some of the buildings that this would apply to. This is just a close-up picture of sort of the ground floor and the second floor of where signs would logically go. Another picture of the district. That concludes accessory wall signs. I can either keep going with circular driveways or entertain any questions.
I'd like to ask a couple of questions. What brought this up?
This, we were...Council asked for staff to investigate it. We took a report in April, and they moved forward with initiating.
But the idea behind is, because right now, what you're suggesting is limited to the first and second floor.
Where signs can be located, correct?
Correct. And before...
Before, the location isn't changed. This is just making upper-floor tenants, so third floor, 10th floor, 15th floor eligible to have, if they wanted to use this option, consideration of a wall sign on the first and second floor, where currently they are not allowed to.
Not on the sixth, seventh, eighth, ninth, 10th.
Correct.
So, we're not going to have a Christmas tree with different signs.
Correct. And that was some of staff's concerns when looking at this, and that's why in this proposal, we're keeping it consistent with our current rules, which is our, you can have it on the first floor or the second floor tenancies. But they've always been limited to those two locations and those two areas of occupancy. This would make this available to the fourth floor to consider.
So, there was somebody in the fifth floor can actually negotiate with the landlord and have a sign on the first or the second floor.
If that property owner comes in and applies for a sign program.
The City of Glendale has eight libraries and provides access to books and information through its website 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Electronic resources.
The same, the same agenda. The current rules for circular driveways are on single-family lots. With a 15-foot maximum driveway width, the area, this paved area is limited to 45% in the front setback area and requires interlocking pavers, permeable pavement, or driveway with a landscape median. The area in front of circular driveway shall be landscaped with five-gallon shrubs covering 65% of the area and must grow to 3% of maturity. And then, consistent with that, in November of 2011, the Comprehensive Design Guidelines did outline discouraging circular driveways or large paved areas. With Council's direction to expand and make it more flexible to more single-family lots to be eligible for a circular driveway, the proposal is to reduce the width of a lot from 80 feet to 60 feet. However, included in that, we would recommend reducing the width from 15...the driveway width from 15 feet to 10 feet to balance the landscaping requirements with the paved areas of the front yard. Just two little sketches of what that would look like in a 60-foot lot width situation with 15 feet. You end up, you would exceed the paving requirement at 55%, but with a 10-foot-wide driveway, you end up at 42.
So, we're going kind of back to what we used to have in 2011?
That is the...how the ordinance is drafted currently.
And what was the impetus for this? What is wrong with what we're doing now?
There was just a desire from Council to look into it.
To look at it?
To look into it and have revising it to make it...to make more single-family lots eligible for circular driveways.
And what were your findings to support this suggestion?
I don't know that there were any findings for supporting this suggestion.
Because there were findings to moving it to the other way. So, how...what are you using to support a decision to return back?
That you can...going to a 60-foot-wide lot and a 10-foot-wide driveway, you can still achieve the landscaping requirements and limited paving and make it eligible to more lots than just 80-foot-wide minimum.
I do want to say, one of the disappointments in this staff report is that it makes no reference to the Greener-Glendale requirement of stormwater mitigation. And to me, I think that's a very important document that should be referenced when these permeable and impermeable areas are proposed or changed. And that's totally left out of this. And I think that if you used that, you would not be able to support this with a good heart, shall we say, or even, you know, in the intent of the Greener-Glendale, which is to make us the best instead of not. So, if you looked at the Greener-Glendale document, you would see that stormwater mitigation would say that we would not even allow concrete in an area that does reduce it. I mean, isn't 40% the landscape now? So, you're saying it's closer to 42? The front yard should be landscaped 40%?
The...in this, in this situation, it's a 42% hardscape percentage.
All right. Now, one of the things, when we do hardscapes like this, the runoff is increased. Who is going to...the city will then have to capture that runoff. It's going to increase total daily maximum loads, so it is going to affect the city's calculated cost for adding to pollutants that are in our receiving waters. That's not addressed in here. I think it's a very important element that needs to be addressed because it's a regional issue, and we addressed it in the Greener-Glendale. So, I would say that I would not be able to support this until that's there because I think that is...all of our ordinances have to work in concert. I do also have another question, and that question is this. So, anytime you increase hardscape in that, I would think you would have to do work with engineering to find out what the increase in your runoff is and whether the existing infrastructure can carry that. And that has to be part of a study that happens whenever you allow that because we have, in this city and other cities within Los Angeles County, removed pervious areas and put impervious areas. We no longer actually recharge our aquifer, and we send it out to the ocean. And many times when we do that, you can't swim in 72 hours after we have a storm event here because of the pollutants that go out there. And we can't ignore that. I mean, we have to be responsible for what we contribute. So, the other element here that I have questions on, and I would like to know the logic behind that, is on page four. "The area located between the street front or street-side property lines in the circular driveway shall be landscaped with five-gallon shrubs covering a minimum of 65% of this area, and such shrubs shall consist of varieties that grow to a minimum of three feet high at maturity." What is the reasoning for that?
The...that language was added when there was a circular driveway. Some of the other concerns was the cars that end up parked on circular driveways. And so, if some landscaping grew up to kind of provide a bit of screen or buffer from the street of viewing the cars. That was the intent.
Let me tell you some of the dilemmas there. If landscaping is supposed to get to a minimum of three feet, it is probably going to grow higher, if it's going to thrive at all. You have a vision cone that is extremely narrow on when you come out of a driveway or when you're backing out of a driveway suit. It seems to me to be a real traffic hazard to request that. That 45-degree angle, if you took that 45-degree angle there and you allowed it from where you back up and there, you would...I would never, as a landscape architect, to ensure my license and my not being...errors of emissions not being called in on me, plant a thing there. From that little arrow there, just draw it straight across, so you would have shrubs maybe in that little top part of the arc for safety and for the safety of anyone who is walking on that sidewalk. Because, you know, not everybody is just going to use it as roundabout. There are going to be family members who park this way, families who park this way, they're going to back up, and it's actually a very dangerous situation.
I had a quick question. Is this for new construction?
No. For existing lots.
Okay. I wish you guys had done an artist's rendering because right now, I'm looking at the standard operational house with a two-car garage. I really can't picture someone remodeling their front...the front of their house such that they would have a circular driveway. Or maybe I'm missing something. But in any event...
Just anecdotally, we do get a lot of requests for people wanting to have circular driveways.
Okay.
We do have some areas that do not have attached garages. They have the detached garage, so probably you would apply to those. That's not...
Okay. So, you put it in front of it, and then you put the offshoot and then go to the sign?
Probably, no.
Hmm. Okay?
And I think there's a speaker who may have some pictures, so that may help.
That's...
Let me...I see faces here with tremendous institutional knowledge. In 2011, we increased the width from 60 to 80. Do we remember what that decision was and why?
We do. It was actually something that was discussed, was brought up by the Verdugo Woodlands Homeowners Association and was discussed with the Zoning Code Advisory Group because their concerns were, and I believe I mentioned that in the staff report...
This is the 2011 decision?
In 2011, they were concerned about the just dominate, you know, dominant paving in smaller front yards and wanting to increase that width to decrease the visual impact of circular driveways and decrease the amount of paving on smaller lots.
The aesthetics, basically.
That, and excessive paving, and the ability to have more landscaping.
Okay.
If you didn't have a circular driveway.
May I add one more thing? I forgot to mention heat island effect, too. That's part of the Greener-Glendale element. The more hard surfaces that you have, the more you actually use them as a heat sink, and the temperature will rise. And so, whenever we allow this, I think you might have to take a median of how many you think it is, take how many you think you would have a year, look at it, do those calculations because I really do think that the Greener-Glendale guidelines that we have have not really been well incorporated into any of the planning staff reports that you all do, and I would really love to see those cited in here as part of our analysis because it's time that we really started weaving it back in into all of our decision-making.
Any more questions for Ms. Asp? Then I'll call the speakers up. Mr. Grant Michaels. You have three minutes. Please state your name.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Grant Michaels. I'm the president of the Homeowners Coordinating Council. We have not taken a formal position on this as the report is relatively new. I'm going to speak in general comments, some of which our concerns were already expressed by Commissioner Landrigan. But again, we are looking at this from the issue of traffic safety, such as not only using the driveways as a roundabout, but driving in and particularly backing out. Looking at the appearance, the coordinating council in general doesn't support the idea of a parking lot in the front yard. The width of the driveway, we would want to make sure that cars do not stack up and then are able to use it as a roundabout. Given that, as you said, most of the homes have...or many homes have a detached garage that is in the back. If this would be a roundabout that would go in front, that would be...the question we would have would be looking at the additional parking, if parking on the driveway would be allowed, and how that would factor into the parking ordinance of the two-car requirement in the detached garage in the back, the goal being aesthetics, safety, and many of the concerns that were addressed here and many of the concerns that would be addressed by our member associations. Additionally, I'd just like to add one comment in how the staff reports are noticed. Reading the notice of the headlines, it wasn't quite clear if these were two separate issues or if they were issues combined, looking at circular driveways in residential areas and signage, all of which is in the downtown-specific plan. And just a little more clarity in the noticing that they may be two separate issues would be helpful when looking at the notices at glance. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Michaels. Next speaker we have is Ms. Stanley.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and board members. My name is Myrna Stanley, and I'm president of the Verdugo Woodlands West Homeowners Association. And it's...we, just to start off with, we absolutely vehemently oppose any changes to the existing code. And to answer your question, we had prepared, and it's referred to in this staff report. Things were...seemed to be going from bad to worse citywide, and we named the booklet Ten Troublesome Topics, and it addressed our residential areas. And among the topics were circular driveways, which, for whatever reason, were popping up all over the place. And it's...we noticed it specifically on Cuyahoga Boulevard, mostly on the upslope portions, but not solely. So, we took photos. We...I was part of the Zoning Code Advisory Committee, which represent...had represented there, oh my gosh, from every single...I think you were on that, Mr. Astori, were you not? From every organization, club, homeowners association, whatever, in the city. And when we originally presented the issues with circular driveways, that they preclude the openness of...and the rhythm of a neighborhood, that they do become parking lots, and we'll show you some photos that I took recently. It just is...we look to you and to the City Council to protect our neighborhoods. Allowing a 60-foot-wide lot, and when this goes to the City Council, I'm going to do a whole thing with 60-foot-wide lots and just show you every other lot or every two lots with a circular driveway. And it was...that's not what Glendale is. That's not what we want our neighborhoods to look like. So, we're asking that you make a recommendation to the City Council that it seems to be working. I have not honestly heard any hue and cry, anybody, come up and say, you know, what's with this 80-foot driveway requirement that I'd like to have a circular...I haven't heard anything about that at all. So, I was disappointed when it was brought up to the council. I don't know...I have so much to tell you about this, I can't think of it all. But if...Kristen, if you could show the photos I took, and it was over maybe a week's period of time. And I don't think I took...
Can you see that on the screen?
No, that's near a drawer. That's...
Yeah, those are...
That's the oak tree in the center of the street. That's...
Is it possible to dim the lights for us? Unless you turn on the television set back here, we can't see it. That's perfect.
Well, so, this is up Cuyahoga Boulevard. There...I don't know if there's another photo that shows this lot. There had to be nine cars on...I mean...
But that's not a problem...
Why put a circular driveway there?
It's not a circular driveway.
No, no, but it's eligible for a circular driveway.
Okay.
So, just think how many more cars we could have.
Maybe they had a wedding.
I was just going to say, maybe there is an event coming up.
Well, that's not unusual, I have to tell you. This is what started it. This used to be all lawn, and they obviously took the lawn out and put this huge paved area with...I don't know what that is in the middle there, but we are very disappointed in that because it's the Verdugo Woodlands. We'd like to see open properties. Do you have another photo, Kristen? This is...this was sent to me by somebody who was at the City Council meeting when this was brought up, and we have a mutual friend, she gave her my email address, so she sent this. I'm not sure what part of Glendale that's in. It's not the Woodlands. This is on a flat lot in the Woodlands, and as you can see, they have...if you can, it's difficult. It's a motor home that's parked there.
And the circular... The house is across the street from Glorieta, what you're showing, right?
No, that's not the one? No. This is on Del Valle.
Okay.
I think that's it for your picture.
Is that it? Okay.
Is that a regular driveway? I can't tell.
So, it's a regular driveway and a circular driveway.
It is. It is. And most of the homeowners who put in circular driveways maintain their straight-in. I'm not sure why. And I remember when this was brought up at the last council meeting, Councilman Astori had said, well, isn't that the object, is to get cars off the street? But what we're going to have is parking lots in our front yards, and it's not just for events. I mean, I've seen cars, and they're supposed to be for the ease to exit. And just so you know, that our...the committee understood the danger, especially exiting Cuyahoga or maybe Kenneth, coming out, backing out to the driveway, taking your life in your hands. So, we said, you need to allow them to provide a hammerhead so they can turn around and head out of their driveway under these busy streets. and head out of their driveway under these busy streets. We actually went in recommending 100-foot and we compromised. So, 80 feet is a compromise. I frankly, I don't know of a city, and there could be some, that allow 60-foot circular driveway or encourage them if you allow them. I, I just think it, it's poor planning practice and I hope you'll agree.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Quick question for staff. Do you have any examples, Ms. Asp, for anything that has actually been done on a 60-foot wide lot? I don't care where it is, whether it's Glendale or Burbank. I just want to get some as, yeah, some...
Let me, give me a few seconds.
There is one.
We gave a few examples when this went to council.
Because I'm looking at my...
Yeah, it was hard to read those.
This is an example of, of something about 60.
Is, is that the same house?
This is what, no.
Is that Galendo?
These are Glendo.
This is Glendo, yeah.
And then that second one shows Ms. Stanley's breaking up the rhythm of, and, and my other concern is gonna, is based on, after having looked at these, is public parking is taken away because instead of one curb cut, you now have two curb cuts. So, and if that's the case, you double the traffic impact on something like La Canyatta, I mean, Canyatta or some of the small, like, my street, if you did that. And we have a neighbor who did, it's...
And I'll point out that I believe these are wider than 60, but less than 80.
Mm-hmm.
The one that you showed, the, the first one that you showed is...
Is, is closer to 60.
It is closer to 60.
I just don't recall the number off the top of my head.
And can we leave that up? Because I think that if you see where, if there were shrubs put in there, it would be, you know, if you had a kid walking by or a person in a stroller, or if you had, you know, somebody walking their dog, their dog would go first and then you would follow it. I mean, I think there's no visibility for the car backing or coming forward.
Do you have any more pictures to show us?
Let's find out. I think this was about a 60-foot wide lot. This is, this is greater than 60. That was it for the examples.
Thank you.
Okay. So, a question from staff. What is it that we're expected to do?
All zoning code amendments come to the planning commission for a recommendation to city council.
Okay. So, can we split it in two?
Bifurcated, yeah.
Yeah, because I think they have nothing to do with each other.
One has nothing to do with the others.
That's fine.
That's fair.
All right.
So, we vote twice?
So, if we have no more questions for the staff, we'll pose a public hearing or deliberation.
I do, would just like to point out that the handouts that I handed out, one of them is a corrected sheet 10 that just has revised, revised code language. It really was nothing substantive. It just included a few typos. So, I just wanted that on the record.
I'll go. I guess we need to introduce a motion that is gonna, yes, that is gonna, or recommendation that's going to be two separate.
Yes.
It's gonna handle...
The lights, they want the lights on.
Yes, I can.
Yes. So, I think the initial one with the signs, I, I move that to, I actually recommend for the city council to approve. And from what I heard and from what you gave your expert opinion or...
Thank you for calling me an expert.
You're a last cap architect, so. I, I would recommend for the city council to not change the current ordinance and just keep it the way it is.
I can second.
Anybody?
This is for circular driveway.
She made a combined motion related to signs and circular driveways with specific...
Can you have?
I second.
Okay. Anything to add or discussion? Okay. So, we have a motion and we have a support. Go ahead, please.
Planning Commissioners, Astorian.
Yes.
Landrigan.
Aye.
Manukian.
Aye.
Shapazian.
Aye.
And Chairperson Lee.
Aye. So, 405 to 0. We recommend to adopt the sign change and we do not recommend the circular driveway and, you know, have it remain as is. So, with that, let's move on to the next item, which is community development permanent updates.
Hi, I'm, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. We do not have any updates at this current time. Thank you.
Any comments from commissioners? See none?
Okay.
So, I do think we should, like, have a spa break.
You, oh, you want your flashbang?